Good evening. Welcome to the September 20th, 2022 meeting of the Sherburne School Committee. My name is Amanda Brown and I call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM. We're pleased to hold this open meeting in person at Dover Sherburne Middle School this evening and are also live streaming with DSC TV for those who wish to view remotely. Please note that this meeting is also being recorded. Next on our agenda is, or first on our agenda this evening is community comments. We have provided a Zoom link for those who wish to make a comment, but for whom it's not possible or preferred to attend in person this evening. Before I read the preamble, is there anyone who would like to make a community comment this evening? Please raise your hand if so. Like, no, do we have anyone on Zoom? Nope. All right. Perfect. Thank you. So we will move on then to our superintendent update. Great. Thank you. And Happy New Year. Before we get started too far into the details, I just want to make sure that I take a moment to recognize all of the folks who worked all summer while our educators had a chance to catch their breath, much deserved so. But to our IT team, including Lucan, who works all summer to make sure that we're unplugged, replugged, and fixed up and ready to go. Our food service team, that certainly does a lot of ordering and organizing over the summer. Our central office team, who works hard to make sure all the bills are paid and prepaid and the materials come in. And this summer really went out of their way. We hired three times the normal number of faculty. So there was certainly a lot of onboarding that happened in central office. Our 19 bus drivers, who show up every day with a smile, ready to greet our kids and be the last people to say, "Have a great day," on their way off the bus. And of course, our leadership team, including Barb and Allison, who did a tremendous job kicking off the school year and launching with great joy and enthusiasm. So thank you to all of those folks who made the school year ready to begin. And then mid-August, my new partner in crime, Denny Conklin, and I launched our new year on August 17th with a two-year, two-day leadership retreat. Do you mind clicking to the next one? Thank you. We spent two days at the MIT Endicott House in Dedham and focused on our three goals, which you'll hear a little bit more about at the joint meeting around equity and the equity audit, MTSS, and supporting all students. And then working on the strategic plan as an opportunity to take all that we've learned around best practices with challenge success, diversity, equity, inclusion, innovation, pandemic learning, and put them together and say, if you take out all the acronyms and all the alphabet soup, at the end of the day, what is the best thing that could be happening in the classroom for kids around teaching and learning? So you'll hear a little bit more about that from Denny afterwards. So from our leadership retreat, we did add in a little joy and reminded ourselves that we are here because of kids. So in going with that theme, we had some singing, some dancing. We each brought our own theme song and created a mashup and had a little fun in addition to all of our learning and sharing and collaborating, which then carried over to our opening convocation, where again, the theme was "because kids," a reminder that after a really difficult year with the pandemic, expecting last year to be more typical and then realizing that there was a lot of retraining and rebooting and restarting and meeting kids in various places academically, socially, emotionally, it took a lot of energy from everyone, parents, educators, administrators. So by the end of last year, we were all pretty tired. So coming back into this year, it was a matter of refocusing and saying, "We do this work because of kids. Let's re-center our passion for this work, why we went into this work, and make sure that we do, we make all of our decisions and make sure the kids are at the center of the learning every day and really engaging deeply in joyful learning and making sense of the world around them so they can have that for the extended, for the extended time." So that said, we had coughing conversation at the opening convocation. I'm sure you saw on Twitter all of the photos from the photo booth being tweeted out, a little bit of fun. There's one over on the wall over there, the World Language Department with their props. And then we came into the auditorium. One of our traditions in DS has become faculty slideshow. So faculty members sent in photos from the summer. And in the music, the background, we had our theme songs playing from the leadership retreat, which was kind of fun. And then we kicked off talking about kind of the year we survived and all of the joy that we wanted to have moving forward. During the opening meeting, we did a little interaction with the audience. We had them texting to the screens so people could see. We talked about what brings you joy, what are you good at, and why did you go into education? Again, grounding ourselves in what we want to bring to work every day and how we want to move forward with kids. And then asked them to suggest what their theme songs would be. Since then, it's kind of fun. We've seen different grade levels and different departments sharing playlists of their theme songs and ask them to kind of share those at opportune moments when perhaps somebody needed a boost or a little help getting through the school day. We then transitioned to talking about kids. And so if you look at the next slide, you as parents would have received an email from me asking for photos of our students throughout the summer capturing moments of joy. We know that our kids are inherently happy and innately curious, instinctively creative, and we want to make sure we focus all of the energy and joy they came off of the summer with in the classroom. So had an opportunity to see some of their photos. And just having gone through the process of getting over 200 emails, over 400 different photos, some families sent me five, and I got to pick my favorite, which was kind of fun. Some lessons I learned was one that it was an opportunity for people to be seen and heard. I sent out the email on a weekend, weekday in the summer, and there was, like I said, over 200 responses, including from students, because I had sent it out to the students in grade six through 12, if they wanted to submit their own photos. And it was just an opportunity for them to highlight the fun that they had in the summer. And I think one of my takeaways was compared to the demographics of our district, the number of non-white families and students that responded with photos, it was disproportionate. And I think that speaks to what we heard in the equity audit, is people are eager to be seen and to be heard and have an opportunity to be recognized for who they are. So I think that's promising that when asked to become part of something bigger, that we had so many people step forward and say, "I'd love to be part of the slideshow for the opening day for teachers." Lots of pictures, most of the pictures, 99% of them, were the kids doing things in the summer. So it was a reminder to us as educators that kids learn by doing, not by listening. The pictures are a reminder that our district continues to grow in its diversity and the number of views and perspectives that we have, and just the strength in that, I think, is pretty incredible. And then there also seemed to be a theme around ice cream. So it was a reminder to all of us that when all else fails and you're having a bad day, sometimes you just need the ice cream to get through. This then tied into our goals as educators moving forward, that we want to listen to the students' theme songs that they bring to the classroom, get to know them as people, engage them in deep learning, celebrate their success, and capture lots of joyful moments over the years so that we can certainly share home with parents. So that was our kickoff. I thought a really powerful quote that I took away from the MAS superintendent's conference this summer, when we were talking about learning and the value of social emotional wellness and being able and ready to learn, is this one. It is literally neurobiologically impossible to think deeply about things that you don't care about. So that needs to make connections with kids, for kids to feel connected to the content in order for them to actually learn and learn it deeply for the long run. So again, that connection between social emotional readiness and learning is top priority. Hence, we're focusing on kids and joy and engagement in the classroom. We then moved to celebrating service. We have 15-year veterans at Pine Hill School, Meredith Connery, Melissa Feldman, and Rebecca Mealy, who we recognized, as well as introducing a new host of educators, which I'm sure Dr. Brown will mention in her report. But so many new perspectives and new ideas coming to Pine Hill and the district that it's, it's super exciting. Our priorities for the year, again, setting a strategic path as I enter this new position and bringing all of the best ideas from all of our initiatives together and making it quite simple, looking at the results of our equity audit, which we'll do later this evening, and then finding ways to continue to support all of our kiddos wherever they are academically, socially, and emotionally. And then lastly, a few other updates. In terms of COVID, we are continuing to listen to guidelines from the commissioner of the state. We're in frequent communication with the Health and Hygiene Advisory Group. At this point, as you know, we are mask optional in the district and attempting to respect the choice that individual people are making, either for the long run or day to day. We have 151 students at Pine Hill signed up to be taking the take-home tests home every other week, and 27 teachers taking advantage of that opportunity. Dawn continues to work with the facilities team to make sure that ventilation is top-notch and everything is up to speed and providing for the fresh air and cleanliness that we need. And we also have a new nurse leader in the district. We had to say goodbye and good luck to Jill Thidor as she moved on to Children's Hospital, but are welcoming Megan Smith in that capacity, who has been a helpful part of our team in terms of planning and supporting students and teachers. And then lastly, the extended day program. Unfortunately, particularly on the Sherburne side of the district, we have not been able to fully meet the needs of our families at this point. So Dawn has been working closely with Lisa Sawen, our community ed coordinator, and is going to provide us an update.
Right. Just to give you some perspective, it was actually a historical number of applications that we received. Through the end of April, we had over 89, we had exactly 89 applications that covered 123 students. Our traditional enrollment's between 80 and 90. And so we knew going into, at the end of April, that we were going to have a waitlist, that we were not going to be able to probably dissipate. Typically, Sherburne has between five and 10 families on the waitlist in a normal year. Obviously, there was going to be more this year. Complicated with that fact, it was the hiring. You know, it's been tough to get staff in any venue in the world right now, and more so for a position where it's, it can be full-time, it's not full-time, but at least you can get benefits if you're one of our group leaders, lead teachers. But we left the year with only having three contracts extended for our SHEDA program. So they took in the number initially a little bit lower than historical. It's what they confirmed with families in April because we did not want to overcommit with students knowing that we were down with staff. You probably saw a flurry of emails going out from different venues requesting help with recruiting. And so I think every one of those little emails probably brought us one person. So we ended up extending six additional offers. Some are part-time, but we do have enough group leaders, and we have two more people starting in October. So we opened the school year just under 70 students. We brought a couple more on, I think, right after that second week. And our hope is that we're going to be able to extend enrollment to a few more families in October, but then we'll be at capacity. And just to give you a feel, our K1 is our most popular, that's fully booked right now, and it is also the one that probably has the most on the waitlist. And our 4 or 5 is our smallest group. So we did have some new families who had fourth graders who got on, but for the most part, our existing families is what composes our, comprises our current cohort of students. And again, I know parents have asked about where I, where am I on the waitlist? It's not that easy when you are dealing with groups of kids in by age and then families that have kids in different age groups. So I think they've done a great job trying to manage and get as many families in as possible. And we're hopeful that the two additional staff that we're expecting do join us in October, get settled. We know that all the other new staff is going to be staying with us, so we're just making sure that we don't overcommit and that we'll, five, seven more students hopefully will come off the waitlist at the beginning of October, which will put us between the 85 and 90 total enrollment.
So it'll still be 30 or so kids?
Yeah. Predominantly on the new families. Right. Like I said, we weren't able to accommodate, we weren't able to accommodate a lot of the new families. So just to give you an idea of what we did last year with our waitlist, anyone who was on the waitlist last year actually got invited for priority registration because we wanted to give them the opportunity to be ahead because they were on our waitlist. Not everyone took advantage of that priority registration. They had until March 21st. And March 21st opened up for everyone, and then pretty much families were still applying through the end of April. We haven't had a lot of new families reaching out since April because I think they know probably we're at capacity. Whereas just to flip you over to the Dover side, which we call DETA, they had no waitlist. Everyone who applied during their open enrollment was actually given a spot. Their waitlist sort of accumulated over the summer as more people decided they might want some, some support after school. But at the end of the day, we were able to take almost everyone off the waitlist. They were all offered spots. And a difference too is that Sherburne has predominantly families in that take advantage of the program for five days, all five days, whereas Dover's is more of a mix, which allows us to include more families because we have three days, four days, some five days. So you're able to accommodate more families that way. So just a little bit of the facts of the two programs that we run and sort of how they both played out this particular year. But we, I think things seem to be going really well. All of the new staff seem to be fitting in nicely. I think they already feel like they're in a really good routine. And so, you know, all fingers crossed we'll be able to take a few more existing families off the waitlist. And then we'll obviously let anyone know if we have any changes in people's schedule. We did confirm the existing families on the waitlist just to see if anyone had made additional accommodations. So we sort of know where we stand, and we only had one family say that they still didn't want to keep their name on the list. So we will work diligently to do that. And Lisa Sawen, who's the director of the community ed, who oversees both the programs, we're already trying to see if there's some way that we can expand the program. I think the only way is potentially to duplicate a second program. I think one sort of site director for the 90 kids is, is a little bit of capacity for one arrangement. But do we have space in Pine Hill? And could we duplicate maybe a smaller program, but at least something else that we might be able to accommodate more of these families? So she's looking at space right now, working with, you know, the personnel at Pine Hill to see what we might be able to use. I think the drawback would be, could we come up with a staff? But we have a whole year to sort of see how that goes. And we are thinking about ways to stage registration next year to give some of the families, again, like we did this year, that were on the waitlist. We might have two different registrations before we open it up to brand, brand-new families, just to make it fair for families to be able to get access to that. We have a small fifth grade, so we're not looking at like we're going to give, we're not graduating a large grade to be able to bring in new students. So that's also something that we're looking at, knowing that kindergarten is sort of those younger grades where you really need the care. So, but that's, if you guys have any questions, but I think they did work all summer trying to recruit and, you know, trying to address whatever questions they had from the families. But this is, I think, we're not the only ones. I think you saw the Boston Globe article. Lisa's been in contact with all the area programs. I give her credit because some of the other area programs overextended spots and don't have the staff. So they had to actually sort of reverse where we, you know, she was very cautious about that, and we did the opposite. So it's been a struggle, I think, in that arena, all across the area, across the state.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Would you like to give your update?
Sure.
All right. Next slide, please. Lucan?
So it's good to be here with all of you as the new assistant superintendent. I just want to give a thanks to the community that has been very, very welcoming, whether it's been the staff and families that I've gotten to meet. Working with Beth so far has been fantastic, and I get to go to work and have a leader that motivates me to want to do the best that I can. And being with the kids also motivates me to want to make sure that we're doing the best that we can to serve our students and our families. So my little update today, it's not a ton of stuff. I'm sure in the future it'll be more lengthy, but I wanted to give you an update from the teaching and learning realm about the things that have been going on. So we had our leadership retreat, as our superintendent mentioned, and then the next week, we started bringing in teachers for professional development. I have to give credit to these teachers and these staff because, you know, they took time off from their summer days to come in and to participate in this professional development. So on August 23rd, we had our instructional launch. So we had all of our elementary professional learning community leaders come in for that, as well as our secondary curriculum leaders and our department heads. And the big thing for that day was to frame what we wanted to do with teaching and learning for the year. So we started thinking about this idea of powerful learning experiences and experiences that we've had where we learned a lot that have been meaningful to us. And we used those to extract, you know, what are the qualities? What do all of these powerful learning experiences have in common? From there, we had some great conversation, and we tried to come up with a list of what we call best practices that encompassed all the things that educators can do to create these really powerful learning experiences for students. So all of the instructional leaders that were there that day, they worked together, they brainstormed, and they came up with about 10 best practices for how we work with our students and how we create powerful learning experiences for the students. One of them, for example, was about having students be able to automatically see the rationale or to see the purpose for what they were doing beyond just the classroom. Another was this idea that students learn best by doing and applying things to authentic audiences and, you know, doing the learning rather than just being kind of minor participants in the learning, but really driving that learning process. And then from there, we broke up into grade level teams, and we started to talk a little bit about those best practices. And in the classroom, what do they sound like, feel like, what do they look like? So as we're all going in and out of classrooms, we can begin to point out the best practices that we're seeing teachers using with their students. The really cool thing about this is that that activity that we did with the instructional leaders tomorrow during the early release day, those leaders are going to do that with the staff of the whole buildings, of all the buildings. So at the end of tomorrow, we're going to have these lists that the staff now have created of the buildings of these best practices, and they're going to run around to all the schools, grab the chart papers, type it all up. And I think we're going to have some really powerful learning tools for when we're in and out of classrooms, things that we can praise teachers for, things that we can coach teachers on in terms of these best practices. So the next day, some of the teachers even came back for a second day after that, which was thinking about our multi-tiered system of supports. So if you're not familiar with the MTSS model, it's really thinking about ways that we can meet the various needs of all of our students. So knowing that every student is going to learn different, have various strengths, things they bring to the table, things that they're interested in, it's about reaching that variability of learners and planning for that variability of learners so that you're really engaging, you're coming up with lesson plans that are going to target all sorts of learners. So you don't have to go in afterwards and change and modify things, but you can put out these activities that are going to appeal to a wider variety of students. So we had Jeff Horwitz come in for that day to lead that session. He works with the Novak Educational Group, and he was asking some great questions to the teachers about their use of data and information. How do we know that students are learning? What are the things that we are collecting? So some things are more formal, you know, the quantitative numbers that are coming in. But what are the other things that we're seeing from students by a conversation you're having with them, by a small group meeting that you have with your students? You know, what are these key measures that we need in order to see what the students are actually learning and what they're experiencing? So we talked about what we do with that data, how we discuss it with teams, and then we laid out, started some, laying out some concrete next steps for how specifically in the elementary level, how our data teams, how our grade level teams can begin to look at that information throughout the school year and use it in real time to make decisions for how they can change their instruction to best engage all students and meet the needs of all students. On August 25th, it was a very busy week that week. That was our new staff orientation. So we have Keith Kaplan. He's a high school teacher who leads the new teacher program and leads all the mentors in the district. So we had a lot of new teachers. That was a great morning where we had the new staff learning about the demographics, about Dover Sherburne, the mission. There's a really nice moment where the mentors got to talk to the mentees and give them kind of the powerful student experiences and stories that they've heard over the years in Dover Sherburne that have informed the way that they teach. So that was really neat to see those conversations happening. And it was just, it was, the energy in the room was really, really nice that day to see people so excited to jump in and to begin to, there's no feeling like putting your first classroom together, and it was exciting to see everybody so excited about that. Other things that I've been up to since I've started, I spent a lot of the summer just reading over a lot of documents, trying to understand what this district is all about, a lot of the things that the superintendent for assistant superintendent has done and just wonderful projects that were already in place. And since then, I've been trying to spend a lot of time in classrooms. So if my focus is going to be on teaching and learning, I need to actually see that teaching and see that learning. So I feel like I've been very, very lucky these first couple weeks of school to be in classrooms. I've just kind of made my, I jumped into Pine Hill, kind of bopping around in the classrooms, and went to an all-school meeting a couple weeks ago, which was like unlike anything I've ever seen for the best. All the singing, all the joy that was in the room there, even some songs that I sang in elementary school that students are still singing. There was a song like Inch by Inch that I remember singing in elementary school. So it was kind of wild to see that. But I was also really impressed just by the fact that the students were leading it, and to see the parents, the caregivers there as well that were participating in that experience was really great to see the community's involvement in that. So just been jumping into classrooms. I like coming during morning meeting in the morning because it feels like a very natural place to say hi, and the students ask me like, "Who's that guy that's sitting over there?" So the teachers have been very, very kind. One of the teachers let the students ask, like, "Ask Mr. Conklin any question that you want to." And one of the students commented that I dressed very nicely, so I must be a millionaire, which I said is not true, but I appreciated their compliment. So it's been fun getting to talk with the kids. And I think the last part too is we've been trying to document all the great things that our teachers are doing on Twitter. So if anybody is watching at home, it's a great time to log on to Twitter and to follow our teaching and learning account, ds-teach-learn, where you get to see all the great things that our teachers are doing and all the awesome things that our students are engaging with on a daily basis. So that's my little report.
That's awesome. Thank you. All right. Dr. Brown, do you want to kick things off with your report?
Well, greetings, Sherburne School Committee. We are back in the saddle after our superintendent's address on the Monday morning before school opened. Our teachers arrived back at the building just high energy and motivated and appreciating the vision that, that Demi and Beth laid out. And we had a day and a half together after that before our students started school. And, you know, our teachers are always very prepared and motivated and at the ready to greet students. And I feel a little superstitious, but this was our best opening ever. And, and I don't exactly know all of the components that have shifted, but our, our teachers are in a higher place, our students are incredibly enthusiastic, and there's, there's, I'm not going to say there's a calm about us because it's not calm. The enthusiasm is just palpable everywhere. But there's, Beth keeps using the word joy. There's, I think we've reclaimed, given ourselves permission to have fun and to lead with the relational aspects of our work, of course, while we're, you know, working on cognitive engagement and more, you know, best practices through, through innovative teaching and learning. It's, it's, we're off, it's a really special year so far, and I am forever grateful. So I spoke to you in, in the principal's report about the impressive preparedness and enthusiasm our teachers and students started the year with. We had fewer new students than usual this year, 19, which is wonderful. You know, we've ranged anywhere from about 19 to some years closer to 40 new students. So our CSA does a wonderful job engaging new families. They have a coffee and a meet and greet schedule for next week. So I look forward to seeing our seasoned Pine Hill families welcome, our new, our new Pine Hill families. It's a, you know, the special aspects of our community for which we're all proud and grateful. Our, I talked about our, you know, faculty continuing to prioritize connection and care, relationship building, really building time in the schedule, not, not just assuming that we all connect through osmosis, as we do, but, but being very intentional with the aspects of responsive classroom that we're very committed to. This year, we're taking our responsive classroom structures and model for making sure that all of our children are respected and seen and heard and connected and, and valued deeper with social emotional learning, explicit lessons around social emotional learning themes. And I put, I put the link in here in case you're interested, but there's, well matched with responsive classroom is a program called Five Fly. And our teachers are really leaning in to embrace the concepts. Our social emotional learning coach and our counselors are leading and modeling and co-teaching in classrooms. And our teachers eventually will, will unpack all of the concepts in, in this Five Fly program and build in time through morning meeting. program and build in time through morning meeting and through other times of day where they're being very explicit about cooperation, assertiveness, responsibility, empathy, and self-control. And, and you don't have to teach these themes in any kind of order. You can really lean in for what you think your class needs at the time, most at the, at the time that they need that. So, we're really excited to take social emotional learning to a more tangible and concrete focus level. I spoke to our instructional coaches who are named in my report for pulling together across both elementary schools last spring, what we call launching lessons, to make sure within the math workshop model, writing workshop model, reading workshop model, and social emotional learning, community building within each classroom, that there are common lessons that our elementary teachers use to make sure that they're establishing the foundations, the structures for learning, the routines, the, the purposefulness. The more our students have that comprehensive perspective, the more they'll buy in and those workshop model structures, when they're built soon, teachers can get to really rich in deeper discourse, deeper, deeper lessons and, and so that's not something we want to stick our toe in. That's something we want to be very intentional about starting at the beginning of the school year. So, where, you know, our goal would be to maximize more valuable instructional time with students if we build those routines sooner. I named the thirteen new staff members. We were a part of what flogged a lot of our, our always smiling central office folks as, as they were onboarding lots of, lots of new educators. Some of our new hires are replacing people who've left our system and others are new positions. Thank you for your support in that last year as you were prioritizing our budget needs and our budget asks. And so, additional counseling support, additional, we did a cost-neutral trade of a couple teaching assistants to gain an extra special education teacher for more direct instruction through, through a certified staff member. You know about the nursing turnover. And we were excited to increase the number of interventionists that we have serving students through the MTSS model that, that Denny mentioned. This year, we have one interventionist who's allocated specifically to social emotional learning. And it's not that our other interventionists don't touch that area, but this person has a strong social work, counseling, behavioral coaching background. So, we're, we're very, very lucky to have, to have found somebody very overqualified for the, the position. I won't speak to professional development because you did, but I did name the teacher leaders who'll be, who'll be leading our first early release day session tomorrow. And some of the, some of the important dates and drills and, and I asserted this year, I'll link, most of you obviously get communications because you have children at Pine Hill School, but I'll link, I'll link pertinent family communications as well as occasionally interesting faculty communications that will inform you about some of the, some of the ways we're focusing our work this year. So, we could, we just, it's, it's, it's been a great start to the school year. We're really excited. We have twelve children from Boston this year, which is the highest number of students that we've had in my eleven years at Pine Hill. So, that's, that's another exciting piece to our, to our school year.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you so much, all of you. And I know just from my fourth grader, I feel the joy when she comes home and plays school for the rest of the day. So, she clearly is very happy in that space. Does anyone have any questions? All right, so we'll move on, on to our warrant report. Thank you.
Two pager this, this time because of the summer break, but on the first page, you should see all the warrants that finished off your fiscal year twenty-two. And on the backside, you see the warrants to date for fiscal year twenty-three. You'll note, just so you understand a little bit, we'll start talking about circuit breaker more, but that there's a, a warrant on fiscal year twenty-three that was actually dated at June twenty-eighth. Well, that's where we prepaid. And so, prepaying circuit breakers is like one of the few prepays that you're allowed to do in municipal accounting, and that's how we manage the funds that we keep on hand. So, we were able to pre-fund a hundred, almost a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars and that's allowed us to sort of use the circuit breaker in more of the years when we need it versus having to exhaust it all when we don't need it. So, that's why you see that one there. And just for the newer members, just to reiterate that, we'll list the funds. So, the general fund is everything that you see in your financial reports. And then you'll see things like food service, which is a separate revolving fund, circuit breaker, the grants, but we break it out to you by fund. And then always the detail is available to look at at town hall, but it's also, we keep copies at central office if you ever wanted to see more. And I thank Amanda for taking over for Nancy left off and frequently attending or showing up to town hall and signing the warrants that are out there. This covers your accounts payable, the payroll were on separate warrants and aren't awarded, aren't reported on here, but those are always available if you'd like to, to look at those. Just moving on to the fiscal year twenty-two budget closeout. So, our number basically stayed within, I think, five hundred dollars of what we projected at your last meeting in June. And we did end the year with a negative, right? So, you can't end the year with a negative. But the town was very generous in reaching out to all departments that if you had unexpected budgetary overages, that they had available appropriations that you could request. So, you'll notice that at the end of the report, I tell you that I did go forward for fifteen thousand dollar requests that took away our negative, made us like two hundred and two dollars positive. But I was able to justify that with the fuel adjustment costs for our transportation, which who knew that the fuel was going to do what it did during that year? And we had some unexpected special education in district transport costs. So, advisory and the board, the select board were more than happy to approve that funding for us. Otherwise, we would have to have gone and delved into some other funds to try to make up that deficit. So, you'll see sort of where we were last year when we were giving back two hundred thousand. This year, we actually had to ask for a little bit of money. So, that's how you could swing, but we are pretty much in line with our budgets. You could see very small variances between salaries and operating. And I sort of took away a lot of the narrative and did bullet points for you just to sort of summarize what happened for the year. Any questions on that? And then just give a couple of brief updates on current year. Good? Okay. So, just to mention, I think you've heard over the summer that due to enrollment, we did add a section for first grade. And just to refresh your memory, that it's going to be funded through your non-resident tuition fund. We'll monitor enrollment as we start billing fiscal year twenty-four, and if we need to, that position will be added in to your fiscal year twenty-four budget. On the flip side, we're looking at out of district. We potentially are looking at a pretty large negative variance in out of district right now. We're waiting for everything to settle, but we've had some unexpected placements and some more expensive placements than we anticipated. I'll have more information for you at your October, but I wanted to at least alert you that we probably will be in a position where we may have to ask the town to tap into the circuit breaker stabilization fund and see where we stand. But we are looking at a pretty significant overrun right now unless something dramatically changes. But I did want to roll a number out until we had everything sort of settled, at least for the start of the school year. And then obviously, that will continue to change throughout the year, but I'll give you more true details of the, the financial impact of that.
Is that related to programs provided Pine Hill weren't accommodating the kids?
Most of the placements are, are six and a half, so not Pine Hill, but older children.
Thank you so much, John, as always, for making this clear. I like the bullet points. Those are really helpful. Any other questions, John? Okay. So, moving on to item five is our consent agenda. We just need to vote to approve the minutes of the June fourteenth meeting. So, I don't know if there are any corrections. I didn't notice anything. All right, so could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Assume.
Thanks, Dennis. And a second?
Second, Christine Walsh.
Thank you, Christine. All right, all in, do we go? We don't have to poll, right? We just do all in favor? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Great. Thank you. And then just to let you know, in your packet, you have some communications. Meeting calendar with updates, which I think we reviewed at the joint school committee meeting recently, our retreat, subcommittee assignments. If anything looks a mess, please let me know. And then we have the minutes from the regional school committee and the Dover school committee from May and June, just for your information. All right, item seven, if you have any items for our October eighteenth meeting, send them my way. And that is, is all. So, we can vote to adjourn. Do I need a motion to vote to adjourn? Yes, I have a motion to adjourn.
Assume.
Thanks, Dennis. Second?
Christine Walsh, second.
Thank you, Christine. And I, any discussion? No? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you so much, everyone.